I'm ready to call this meeting in order. It is a regular council meeting of October eighteenth, twenty twenty one.
By the way, to the vibe of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got a pretty short agenda, but we may have some other things to talk about. So, roll call, please.
Mayor Laughlin.
Here.
Councilperson Sexton.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Goodweiler.
Here.
Stulman.
Here.
All right, before we get started, we, I need a motion and a second to approve the agenda. We have to start doing this. Jerry and Jody. Calls in favor to approve the agenda.
Wait, wait, I can't. Sorry.
You can actually do that.
Why did I do that?
Okay, Sexton.
Yes.
Goodweiler. Miller.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
All right, consent agenda consists of the minutes on the October fourth, regular city council meeting. When we claims, give me a motion someone.
Smooth.
Colton and Nick. Any comment on the claims?
I do.
Go ahead, Colton.
So, like we were talking, I was wondering about the fire pack insurance renewal from Springdale Agency. The fifteen thousand twenty-nine bucks. Have we tried to put that in with our ICAP insurance and see if it would be cheaper? Is that for a whole year?
Heidi's not on. I don't think anyone is on that would know the answer to that question.
And, and Colton, maybe I can help on that. I know in the past, our current insurance doesn't offer replacement costs for equipment, and one of the fire pack things pays for a new replacement of the apparatus.
That's the difference between ICAP's insurance and Springdale Agency's insurance?
From what I understand, there's some other, Kevin would be able to probably better distinguish that, but there are some differences. And there was a specific reason why the fire department kept the fire pack insurance.
Like we've talked about that before. Kevin gave us a good reason.
Okay. That's all I got.
The brush pile grinding for eighty-six hundred is twice a year thing, maybe more this time.
I had a question on some of the building incentive payments. Notice one of those was, seemed like it was a little high. I don't know if that was somebody combined, like two, two years together.
They may have.
It's like, where is that? They're down here at twenty-four hundred dollars from Perkins. Wow, for Pan. That's an expensive tax burden on them. If that's one year of the city taxes.
That's probably a whole year of.
Jerry, which one was it?
It was Sam Perkins. Eighteen hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Give me one second.
Want to make sure that they're not getting paid for the city, for the school and the county.
It's in the claims, but it's not in the farther down.
Oh, keep going down. No, the other way.
You're right, but that's last week's minutes, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Last means minutes. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And we already approved it.
Yeah.
But that's a good question still. Heidi, you looking at something up then?
Yeah, I am. Give me one second, please.
Hey, man. Is Webex vehicle fuel, is that the gas? And then Cedar County go up fuel, is that the diesel?
Yeah, for the most part, Webex, that's what we, we go track that. Those cars. Cedar County go up is diesel and then gas barrel at the center.
Yeah, they pay the whole year.
That's just, that's just the city's portion?
Yes.
Wow.
There's another one down here we just approved that was like twelve hundred, thirteen hundred bucks. So
for half a year.
Yeah, so maybe that was just for half a year.
Yeah, thirteen hundred for half a, that'd be for half a year.
Yeah, but it's just cities portion.
It's about a third of everybody's tax. Well, less than anything. Okay, Sam just
I don't know where he lives.
Yeah. Orange Street? No, Gilbert Sullivan Street.
Okay.
Okay, um, any other comments on the claims or minutes then? If not, let's vote to approve that, please.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Stulman.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Okay, we have before a public hearing. I will open the public hearing on the matter of rezoning.
Ten four, we got open forum first, buddy.
Oh, you're right.
Public meetings closed.
Okay, communications open forum. We'd love to hear what you have to say. We can't take action, but we'll listen to you.
Well, the person that instituted
Will you introduce yourself, please?
Linda Kessler.
Right.
I'm an employee of the burn station.
Thank you.
And the brought our attention that one of the business owners was coming to the meeting tonight to discuss parking on Main Street, particularly room station employee parking on Main Street. So I just wanted to come and clarify that Amy has ten employees every day, six days a week, and two employees are the only number that park on Main Street. Not all ten of them, just two. And they park in the third fourth and fifth space away from the quilt shop door. Um, Amy has seventeen full and part-time employees. And so that's a pretty good number, only two park on the street. Um, she's open six days a week and she has fifty-five to seventy customers who come in on a daily basis. And as far as I know, they have not caused any congestion parking on Main Street. These sixty-five or these customers come from all over the state, come from neighboring states, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Illinois, Missouri, all over. Um, these customers come and they eat here, they shop here, and their tax revenue is good for West Branch. So I just don't understand the problem with two employees parking on Main Street with the amount of one percent sales tax revenue that Amy's business brings in. And I'm sorry that the person who brought this complaint is here, but it is an ongoing complaint. So I just wanted to verify that not all of the room station employees park on Main Street.
Okay, yeah, we, we noticed that all these stalls are full.
But they're not groomed stations. I mean
Yeah, you mean you fill them up. There's, some of these are open, which is kind of understandable.
Well, we kind of hate to park here.
I know, yeah.
So
You could. It's public parking.
I know. So I just wanted to make
Two out of ten, that doesn't sound, I didn't
We're just kind of sick of getting the cops called on us. Right, so
That happened once or just
Five times in the last couple months.
I guess at the end of the day, it's public parking.
It is. And we've been cordial about not parking in front of certain businesses because we know that, you know, older people need to get in there, get in and out, but it's kind of, it's coming, it's becoming a nuisance.
Yeah, given the volume of employees and customers, I have a hard time trying to make you change something.
Yeah, we are doing everything that we can to get in.
My only comment would be there there are, I see open spots that lot to the south.
Yeah, those are okay for
They're open occasionally.
But when I'm there, till ten o'clock at night, I'm not walking over there where it's dark and I'm not going to park over here where it's dark even.
So, but I just wanted to let you know, we do not take all the stalls in the New Street parking area.
Okay.
So that's all I have to say.
As far as I'm concerned, we haven't even heard a complaint officially.
Yeah.
So I don't think there's anything for us to do.
Yeah. So, yeah, she's not here, so I don't know why she didn't come. So, but I wanted us to be heard.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go.
Thanks a lot.
She's in Ohio at a big horse congress show and
All right, we'd love to have you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Um, public hearing on the matter of rezoning property north of East Main Street, west of North Fourth Street. We want to rezone from I two industrial to planned unit development, PUD. Um, this includes the old Crowe site. Includes a building on the corner of Fourth and Main and the Bennett property where the Bennett TV and Rio used to be, as well as the, uh, West Branch Roofing Property. And the grain bins. And the grain bins that are there. So it's, it's pretty much the whole block. Um, except for a few houses on Fourth Street. So is there anyone here to speak to that? To comment on that particular good or bad rezoning? And up next on our agenda is the first reading of that rezoning.
Does that include Mark Thomases and
No.
Dick Moss?
Okay, no.
Changer?
No.
Okay, just
I talked to Shane. Okay, well, anyway, we didn't
Okay.
Okay, hearing no comments, I will close the public hearing and we'll move on to the first reading of ordinance seven eighty-four, rezoning certain property generally located north of East Main Street and west and adjacent to North Fourth Street from industrial, from an industrial district I two to a planned unit development district. Need a motion in second place.
Second.
Motion, Nick did. Okay. My comment is this is necessary to get that plan that property developed. And this is the next step. The city's kind of taking the bull by the horns here. We're not waiting for a developer to come and ask for it. We're gonna we're gonna do it.
So if it does include West Branch Roofing and the grain bins, that, that's industrial.
It is now.
So we're changing it to PUD?
If someone, a developer, say, would want to buy grain bins,
Um.
They can tear them down and it would be part of a planned unit development.
I see.
This also helps West Branch Roofing because they want to build a new building and under the I two zoning setback requirements, their building would be forty, forty feet wide, thirty feet wide, if that, with the front yard setback and rear yard setback. The PUD allows us to
Yeah.
modify those setbacks.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other comments? Hey, we got a motion to approve. Um, let's go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Goodweiler.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
All right, item C, second reading of ordinance seven eighty-three, amending the all train vehicles and snowmobiles chapter, chapter seventy-five. Give me a motion someone. Jody, Colton will second. Um, Cory put this together right out of the Cedar County's playbook. Falls right in line with Cedar County allows, it seems like a, seems like a good ordinance. Any other comments? All right, let's go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Stulman.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Resolution twenty forty-two, approve a quote not to exceed thirty-eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars for NutraJet system, systems for sludge judging at the city West Branch Legumes. Motion someone. This isn't cattle judging at the fair, this is sludge judging.
Just determine how much sludge is in there, type of sludge or what it
Yeah, they want to, they'll do some boarings, I think, like on a fifty-foot grid.
They'll, they'll pull samples as much as they see the what's in there.
So there'd be like some irons and some solids and non-organics that we'll have to remove.
Heavy metals, imagine.
Yeah, but is it gonna eat up or take our those little things eating?
Bacteria?
The tests, our little test stuff.
Those are even working.
Yeah.
Those are what I'm doing, I don't know.
We haven't bought those for a year, have we?
Yeah, we quit about June.
The summer.
Yeah.
It's just a poor sound. This is part of the, uh, I don't know if this is
Part of the waste water treatment.
Any other questions, comments? All right, Leslie, please.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
All right, moving along. Let's talk about capital improvements. This is just a discussion, last item on the agenda. So, um, Leslie has put up on the board there in the back of the room four major capital improvements that we've been talking about for years. Wastewater Treatment Plant and, and Dave Schekinger has given us pretty much that estimate. It's a, it's an estimate of the dollar amount. Um, best faith estimate right now what each of those would cost. Um, wastewater treatment is seven point eight million, Cedar Johnson Hoover Highway Connection at six hundred and twelve thousand. East Side Water Main Project at two point seven million and the Cedar Johnson Road at two point five million. Where's the, uh,
Downstream.
Downstream widening.
It's underneath the wastewater treatment. I put a little arrow, the WAPC downstream widening. I put a question mark for the
I see it.
And then SRF sponsored project. That's tentatively being how it's
Um, so just so you, we, it passed the first round of approval for it got recommended to, from one committee to the higher up committee to the next committee before it goes to a final decision making in November, I believe. But that's, that's good. It's looking good that that could, could happen. Um,
How, how did the East Side Water get to be two point seven million? That included more than just water and sewer?
When we first talked about it, all I was figuring off of was water main work that we took from one other project that we had just done the prices off of that. As it stands, the prices are higher. But it's also redoing the the roads on Orange Street and College Street. They had looked at doing asphalt with proven better and the cost right now are toward a concrete street. It's, the amount of over is negligible, so it's makes sense to do that, but the, the cost of the streets is put in there. I mean, you can take them back out if you want, but that's, that's what's in there also.
Okay.
The water main projects, water main projects did go up as we I mean, like I said, when I, when I gave you guys that cost, I told you, just
That was pre-COVID costs.
Wasn't off of just another project that we did that wasn't in factor in everything that could happen on that side of town. It's when they start putting it together and as they're building it out, they're getting the cost closer to what it's actually
So is that, uh, the streets, is that two blocks of streets on each street?
Yeah, two blocks. So it'd be from Fourth Street to Sixth Street on Orange and on College.
That include the
Intersections.
The green, last last block of green.
So, and then it'd be water main on Sixth Street, water main on College Fourth Street, Main Street, Water Street, Cedar, Cedar and Second. It's a lot of water.
Under the street or
Some is under the street. So that's the
What do you mean on Sixth Street?
Sixth Street, we'd be replacing all the way on Sixth Street. That would be behind the curb would be under street.
Okay.
But you still have to tear out
Trees?
All the intersections. Well, on the west side, there's not as many trees. And the ones that are over there are probably there's a good portion of them.
Do you have an idea what the streets are, the breakdown of the streets compared to that water and sewer?
No, I'm not sure. We don't have the actual numbers. They, you just kind of give me a ballpark. That's kind of where it's at.
So much infrastructure on those streets that need to be put in, water and sewer, that kind of
Well, the sewer, so we've done all the rehabbing of the sewer from Sixth Street to oh, First Street basically, and then some other stuff spread back down. So we don't have to reuse sewer over there. Um, the storm sewer, Orange Street, that takes in storms, so we're being rebuilt in there. College, we had to some of it depends on, uh, separation distances. So like on College, we ended up having to water main for storm sewer because of the sewer main running down center of the street and the storm sewer then water in order to fit it all in there, because you have to have so much between them. So that, that brings up the cost quality to just block that on the next block up. And on the next block up, and we're mixed up eighty-eight, we're gonna have considerable remodels on the north side and actually it's outside for a couple of hours. Or get all the way from the houses with the roads. There's quite a bit that's going on with water main project, projects on College Street and Orange Street.
So I'm seeing all those projects combined is about what, six point three million?
Minus
Five point two, no, six million.
Yeah.
About six million.
Well, the first one says seven point
Well, I'm not counting.
We're not counting that. It doesn't go against our
So I had a little chat with Maggie Berger. Um, just to warm her up to start thinking about how these could be financed and you really don't want to go to the bank and borrow, like, like for Cedar Johnson Hoover Highway. You know, what do we pay for interest rate at the bank? Maybe three to five percent interest rate? I have no idea, but general obligation bond would be down near two percent. She suggested probably we should think about a general obligation bonds and not do it four or five of them to get to six million. One or two of them, two or three, because you're paying bond counsel. You don't want to pay them five times. You just want to pay them twice. So she thought however these work out, um, a general obligation law might be the best way. And I'm not sure how that goes about. Do we have to have a referendum? We don't have to have a
Those are not referendum projects.
They're essential
For purpose.
Essential for
Streets and The streets and, uh
Yeah.
Utilities.
So it doesn't require a referendum from the voters.
So could we loop them all together, the Cedar Johnson, the Cedar Johnson, the Roundabout and the water? Could we loop them all together and then see how much we want to tiff that? So we can see how much payment of that one bill comes out of tiff. We can see how much of it's going to come out of water, how much of it's going to come out of sewer? And then we can figure out what's left.
Right.
And, and then if
That's what she said. She's, she thought her water till was pretty healthy.
I also, I know I put one million dollars for East Side Water Main in the tip already. Doesn't mean you have to spend it, but it's already in the plan. Because I knew this was coming.
Or an asking
Yes.
December?
No, but for, it's in the plan already. So you could, you could ask for it in December if you knew you're going to issue some.
We can ask
Cedar Johnson Road is
Yeah, we can ask for it before we incur
Cedar Johnson Road's in our
Cedar Johnson Road's in the tip plan or, or we don't plan it.
Well, I would suggest the East Side Water Main, which we really want to get going first, and Hoover Highway Roundabout, that would be one that's, was that three point three? And that might be one, and then Hoover Highway, Cedar Johnson would be later.
How much would be another? How much do you want to take out? Can you do that all at once? Matter, is that a multi-year? I'm just asking you, multi-year projects.
I would, I would think you'd split these like water main stuff into two
Two summers.
I was just asking, so we didn't
I mean, it'd be, it'd be a lot to do all that.
Yeah, you got other stuff to worry about too.
This is Dave Schekinger. Can I say a couple things?
Hi.
So on Cedar Johnson Road, one of the things we're going to have an issue with, and Kevin, you can maybe explain this a little more, is that the county still owns half that road? If we're looking to use tip and the county doesn't participate, that cost is for the full road. We have a little bit of an issue with trying to pay for that. And then the, uh, the water main project, some of the discussion we've had is if we want to try to keep it small enough that we can have local contractors bid on it and be able to complete those projects. We have to have the money spent when we do a bond within two years. And if we spread it out into three or four phases, uh, over a couple of years each, we would have to do two separate projects, bond, bond twice for that, so we can spread it out long enough that we can make the project small enough. Unless we bid two projects in the same year.
So the smaller projects would save us money.
That would It would just make it so that a contractor that doesn't have the bonding capacity to do the, the full project would be able to take on a smaller portion of it.
Be one street at a time, College Street and one street.
I guess it really wouldn't be any big deal to do with the East Side Water Main. Half, you know, Phase One and then Cedar Johnson, the circle in one bond, and then Phase Two of the East Side and then Cedar Johnson Road is the second one.
Yeah, I agree.
So Dave, do you think the county, Johnson County would give us the rest of the road?
Oh, I think they probably would.
Yeah, but we're not going to pay for it.
Well, but if you, okay, what Dave was saying is if, if the, if the county does not participate in the Tiff project, they, they, you'd have to get their permission to do so.
But after we get the Roundabout done, because they might pay for that half of it.
Might, they're gonna, they're
I'm just saying the part, the, the main line road, not the Roundabout.
What you're saying is Cedar Johnson Road, the tipping portion of the Johnson County site has to be approved by Johnson County.
Yeah, if you're gonna do
For us to use it.
Definitely. Yeah.
Cause it's in Johnson County.
Johnson County.
Using their
Probably better off
County must
But
But we have to do a twenty eighty agreement for the roundabout, so maybe that's something we can discuss at that time too.
Well, and maybe that's something we can do with, I mean, that would be kind of crappy to take their taxes.
Yeah, well, they. You know.
We wouldn't be taking Johnson County taxes, all the tip revenue is coming from the Cedar County portion of the city.
Oh, well, that's okay.
Yeah, so. So uh. I mean, I think that's something we could put in the, put in the twenty eighty when we're doing the roundabout thing and maybe we can get that taken care of, one big agreement. I'd have to amend the plan to include the Johnson or the Johnson County portion after that would be approved by, by agreement. Cause I could only put the uh Cedar County portion in at this time.
Well, Cedar Johnson Road, I see at least two years away. And that's not going to happen next summer.
Oh, I'm just saying we want to get in the agreement and be done with it, if we're going to do the agreement once. So for whatever we have to do in agreement for the roundabout for each portion that each entity's paying, we want to get it in that agreement.
The best case scenario is when we do the intersection, it'd be nice to be doing Cedar Johnson Road, the whole road's going to be closed all at one time. Instead of doing the intersection, close the road, two years later, close the road again.
Can't see that happening.
No, I, I don't either.
But yeah.
Sure would be ideal.
Be nice if Johnson County paper have Cedar Johnson Road. Why wouldn't they?
Because that might be annexed into West Branch someday, they will not pay for.
Still in their county though, it doesn't matter if it's in our city or not, still their county.
But they, but they, they'll just say, I choose not to, that is not a road they're going, they're going to choose to upgrade.
Yeah, listen. Well, I had a little meeting with one of the supervisors and. She said what you just.
It's just, it's just their policy over the years.
Well, they're going to annex the west side of the road anyway someday. And then Johnson County just paid for half.
To West Branch, they do this.
So they're not, they don't want the taxes that comes from that, the, of the, of the buildings, they don't want nothing to do with that, you just keep those. Right?
Yeah, they don't spend any of that money off.
Yeah, I mean, you, you have.
Even if it's annexed into the city, that you're still going to get the county portion.
Correct.
Well, then can we just?
She didn't say.
Why don't we just have Cedar County petition and it'll just take it, we'll just make it all the way to Oasis Cedar County.
I'm just saying that's their policy and it doesn't just apply to West Branch, it applies to all cities. And John, you know, they just won't pay for upgrades on stuff that's near cities, it might be annexed someday.
Okay, so let me ask, does anybody have any major objection to any of those projects? Um, estimated costs, um, I guess the next step would be. Maggie Burger is going to have to do some work for us and uh. Yes, ma'am.
I don't have any objections, but I feel like I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't at least bring up that we're looking, we're talking four and five years out from now. With some of these being completed. And you also have interstate widening that's going to be going on. And your Main Street is not going to hold a lot of traffic. So I just feel like. Not saying you should put that on the list, I just think that that needs to be in the back of your mind.
No, I think Main Streets.
That there's got to be. At some point, it's either gonna have to be overlaid.
I thought, I thought we were putting a sign up on the interstate that every, every vehicle that wants to go through town has to go south.
Nick, the toll road?
Nick, it'll tell, yeah, put toll booth.
Toll booth.
And it's not, it's not the whole road, but from the bridge by four, that one doesn't have concrete underneath it. So it's just an asphalt.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, we're, I'm aware of that.
And I figured you were, I just wondered. I just figured that's kind of my place to make sure.
I think that's the next on our radar, this, I see this as a. Five-year plan, we just had a five-year capital improvements plan, we just finished it two years ago.
And by the time we put this one, by the time we put this one on the books and we start getting into it. Then the last five-year one ought to start coming off the books, so then it should free up some money.
No, it's not supposed to be.
But that doesn't mean you're not going to go through town.
They don't recall, but when are they going to do the interstate widening and it starts?
The bridge is supposed to be completed. By the end of next summer, maybe.
Like a perfect time to do Cedar Johnson Hoover Hoover connection to me, it's gonna be real hard.
No, that's gonna happen next summer, should happen next summer.
It'd be real hard to go through town and you can't get through.
That's right. I. But the interstate is going to be open all the time. It's going to be open.
Yeah.
We're not going to close it down.
There's be a lot more wrecked.
I was gonna say until we have wrecked.
They're a little behind on.
Did you guys see that semi on eighty? There was a wreck this morning and the semi was on the. Eastbound road and it was in the ditch facing the other direction. And you can see where it went and lanced off the wall and come across. I had a bad hell ride to get turned all the way around.
Rather see that.
I've seen it so much. Turned around backwards on a two-lane highway. He went down, he went down in the ditch on one side.
Okay, stay focused, you guys. Um, all right, so I'm not really hearing any serious objections.
We're looking at like a three.
I'm thinking four. Yeah, three phases.
What happened with the downstream winding? Doesn't get sponsored.
I don't li, I don't like that whole idea of that of being the way it finances, because we don't get that money. Until the wastewater treatment project closes out, so you're talking two, three, four years from now. So you're leaving our town and everything exposed for two or three or four more years.
You're talking the downstream widening? But you, you can also do the project, get the money at the end and get reimbursed way af, way after it's done.
So.
I was told no.
Oh, I just didn't get too many dollars in court bill for it, so that was not.
So that, that project is a.
Partially.
It, it might partially fund something because it's not for. That was going to be funded out of the money that was left from the part project. And then storm water funds. So I think, I think when uh, before Gordon left and Redmond left, they were looking at maybe a seven thousand dollars exit somewhere in there.
So when are we talking about doing it?
I, I'm working towards getting the easements for, by the time spring rolls around so we can get going.
I was gonna say, I, I thought, didn't we say April first? Yeah, I thought April first was when you're going to do it.
Dave, you still listening?
I am, and we are working on permitting with the uh foot lanes and Corps of Engineers, so.
And I'm working.
That'll be a parallel track with the property acquisition.
Are you actually working on easements or are you working on?
Well, you, you're going to get to the, we're, we're going to get them one way or the other, one way or the other, there's more than one property owner we have to get easements from, so. They gave me a list last week, last meeting.
So. Would that potentially get started this coming spring then, Dave, the waste, the downstream widening?
Kevin, what do you think as far as moving through the necessary process for property acquisition, is that uh?
Bring in the appraisals done by mid-November, it shouldn't be any problem.
Okay.
Yeah, but that, you give them like a month to get, if they don't sign, you go file and then there's a debt drop dead date.
No, no, I understand, you got to start your stuff now, but I mean, our game plan was shuffles in the ground on April one.
So that's a, we're, Dave and I are working towards that, so.
All right, Dave, uh, keep working on toward that April first-ish.
Well, how hard of time are you going to have getting? What was that, uh, on the corner of Fourth and College? You had to wait first. Yeah.
Right now, the pipe, it doesn't sound like it's as hard to get as it was. Couple months ago, but it's still difficult to do it. So I think you can. I think you can get it, but it's ordering and waiting.
Okay.
So there, there's definitely lead times and all that stuff that we're spending compared to.
Okay. All right.
I think it's still possible to be ordered.
As soon as we can give you an answer.
I mean, yeah, and then it's, it's just, once they start committing stuff out and.
Well, yeah.
Okay, so obviously we don't have a city administrator right now, so I, I'll call Maggie and let her know that we're kind of, we're considering all of those. Um, potentially. Three different. Bond, Geo bonds. Let her tell us what, she may know more how to. Yeah, yeah. And you just do two and have some money sitting in the bank for a while.
Is there any break, breakdown on? Like. Oh, Geo bond for like water and sewer separate from paving? Which would be all along.
Would all be in the same bond, I mean, we could, it would be how we decided to pay for.
Out of different pot money.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, so you can say it, it's all backed by your taxes, but that doesn't mean you have to pay it back with your. With your Geo bond, you can pay for a tiff, you pay for water revenue, whatever. Roadies tax for streets.
And every one of those projects is tip-able, and though they're not. Creating any revenue. But we could do a tip asking for some of that, yes, ma'am.
So. Keeping in mind that if you do want to pay for stuff out of water, we have a water tower that's going to be painted within the next forty years, which means.
Two hundred thousand.
Three years. So if you want to pay back water with water and sewer with sewer. It's going to be difficult to do that and still pay the tower, which is going to have to be. There's no waiting.
Yeah, you've been saying.
Well, there's no, there's no necessary that we have to pay all of it with water and all of it with sewer.
No.
But. A portion of it should come from that.
Yeah, and that's however you guys choose to do it, I just, like I said, I just want to make sure you guys have the information that I have. That we talk about the shop and think about that, make sure that you guys know. So it's not. A big surprise when you.
You're saying three years from now at the most?
At the most.
Right, so.
What do we have in our water fund right now?
I'd have to look, right now, there's, we have enough, so we have the three months operating at a minimum. We probably have closer to five, I think, less than.
Could we roll that into? This next year's budget, the water tower painting?
Um, we could if we pulled out of the, I, I'd have to look, I can't tell you for sure without looking at the fund balance.
Maybe we should just get it done now.
Also the. Other projects, like if you want the. Greenview, North Lake, that sort of stuff, so that's.
Right.
So is that included in that?
No, no.
So that was one of that, that was like.
It's gonna take a reading.
It was on the way outside edge of it, so we thought we'd do that.
So this is just the east side, it's not those ones?
It's some of them spread.
Okay.
It's almost all the side though from out. Fourth Street. To Sixth Street.
Yeah, but there was.
There's a couple of small ones like Second Street and Cedar, that one, because we have some of the spaces right down there. I think on Water Street, there might have been a jump to go down to the fire hydrant down there. So it was basically all that.
I remember looking up the map.
Okay, so Leslie wrote, we, we do have other projects, there's Greenview Water Main Loop. That means some serious improvement, portions of it.
That was actually put into this year.
I know.
But then the College Street Water Main Project went over by some improvement because of the cost of pipe and everything else. And it got, did not get done before July one, so it actually got paid for out of this year. So, so the money, what it used for Greenview got paid on the College Street plus, plus some. So in order to actually do the Greenview one, we have to amend the budget plus pulling enough to do the Greenview Water Main Project.
If we did it in this year's budget?
If we did.
I'd rather plan for it for next year's budget.
And that's in, instead of. Pushing us into a corner where we're putting a ton of money into that, that it'd probably make more sense to do that.
There again, that's another project that you have to year gets pushed to the next year, the next, the next has been happening for a hundred years, that's.
The water tower though, isn't that, we've been setting money aside all along for that, correct? Isn't that how, that's what you, everybody was instructed to do at least?
Yes, but the money that's in there, so it goes in there and it's on paper. That it's in there, but if we spend more than what comes into our budget in here, which we. Haven't been doing, but if we were to pull out of fund balance, it would pull some of that money out. So say when we did Second Street project and. And we came back in at the end of the project and said we want to pay eighty thousand of it out of water. Eighty thousand out of sewer, that pulls out of that balance.
So it's never actually set aside, it's just left in the operating fund, so you.
Well, it's in the fund balance. But say, say if we want to make a transfer, that transfer pulls out of that money that we've been saving. The only way to actually save it, save it, is to pull it out, like you'd have to put it in a totally separate account, which you don't, you just don't normally do that.
Isn't that what we do? Isn't that, I'm confused, because I thought that's what we were supposed to start doing. Unlike our vehicle replacement and stuff like that, put it in a different account. So it's not in the general fund, it's pulled out and set aside for that.
It's, it all comes from the same general fund pool.
Right.
Matt's got a. Place.
It's, they're not technically pulled out of the. The accounts and put into. It's not like you have your checking account and pull this up and put it safe, that's not. I mean, if you guys want it set up that way, I think ID could. Change it around, that is not what Gordon. Gordon was instructed to do it that way, but that isn't how it was happening. It's what it used to be years ago, but I don't think it is anymore, I think that fire department money is in the same general account. Yeah, it's, it's basically a paper, I mean, it's on paper. As long as it's being maintained on paper and everybody's. But if you, if, so say they came in and said, okay, we have a million extra in general fund. Why not pay down this, we can get paid down faster, they, it might be stealing from one of those accounts. Because it's all in one big pot at the, I mean, our water stuff is not, it's in water, it's in sewer. But the same way, it's, if you take it out of there, you're taking it from something that's being put aside. If you don't actually look at. How much has been saved over the years?
So. I think maybe the way we ought to start, this really has a whole lot to do with this, but it kind of does. Is. Maybe we should start doing, you know how we opened up funds for this project and each. Maybe we ought to open up a fund and say, this is the water tower fund. And you physically take the money and put it in there. And then you know how when we have to move stuff around, they have to bring this stuff and we have to okay that they take something out of this fund and put it, to pay it. Maybe we make that start happen to happen, so there's a set aside for the fire, there's a set aside for. Police and they physically put the money in them funds and in order to take them out, you gotta come here and tell us why you're taking them out. Then, then that way.
Hey, how hard would that be?
Um, it would not be very hard, I, I would need a resolution, of course, to. To make it happen, but you know, as to what Matt was saying, I mean, we have one checking account for the city. Um, the way we set things aside, as you would say, is all on paper. I mean, we create budgets, right, every year? And we say we're going to spend so much money on this and that, that's, that's how I and the other departments keep track of what we're spending. But it's all coming out of one checking account. We just keep track of it on paper, but if you want to do that, it's, it's easy to do.
Just a matter of making a line item.
That's correct, it's a line item.
And making project line items, we had Tommy Park, the line item, we had. We've got others, why couldn't we make a water tower? Repair, we could make a, each one of these will have a project, I'm sure.
You know, and a couple of times a year, they always come to us and say, we're going to move. This money from this fund, or even if we want to pay a bill, sometimes we have to transfer this money from here to there. We ought to just make the set aside things we have, like. Transfer this money from here to there, we oughta just make the set aside things we have like that, so if they're gonna. Take the money that's set aside and do something with it, it has to come here.
We do have a set aside for fire, that's been established, that's been going on for years. Um, and I believe it was a couple of years ago, there was one for, um, the police department for vehicles and equipment.
So there is.
Well, now we want one for a water tower.
Sounds good, Colton.
Well, we come up with others also.
Not too much? Two, that's right, two water towers.
One light item, water towers, I think we could handle that.
That money out either, it's not that, like, we don't go over, way over budget and blow that money, it's just that. If you, so if we take a capital project like Second Street, because I know then we paid the water stuff. Out of water and sewer stuff out of sewer. You pull that fifty grand out of there, and it's not accounted for, like, on paper that, well, we had. Hundred and twenty thousand for water tower painting, and now we're taking fifty of it, so now we're down seventy for water tower painting, it's just, it's gone and. I know, then we get to that point and go, okay, well, we have a hundred in our set aside, we gotta save back seventy more.
Yeah, you're kind of having oversee that.
We're gonna take that off, it's like.
We won't touch it, we won't touch it.
The only other way you can, which Tim has got prices on. Well, I can, like, you hire a company, they come in, they inspect your towers, they, you pay them so much per year and. I did some math on it, and it's costing you more, but you have somebody that's looking at your towers and you're putting them on the side. They're putting them on the side. That's another option. He was giving another quote on it just for his budget, so you can see what, what I paint now too, but, uh, last time you got it.
Didn't you just send one of the guys over, over the side with a rope and have him paint that water thing?
I would have, kid who washed that one, the painter, he did an horrible job. Okay, alright, interesting, so. Go ahead.
So we got six and a million, six to six and a half, I just put a buck there. And now there's been some bold talk about us. Doing the crow site ourselves, where's that? Four million dollars to do the crow site ourselves. I don't see that, if we wanna do all these, not to be grumpy about it, but we're. Have, have, how many people talk about, oh, we're gonna do that ourselves, well, we got six to six and a half million in front of us.
We, there's someone interested.
I just know there's talks about doing it ourselves, and I'm not seeing it if we got six to six and a half.
We don't, that'd be a last resort in my mind, if we got someone interested, I'd.
Yeah, that's fine, I just know there's some talk about it, I just wanna throw that out there, that there's talk about it. Either you need to do one other project, or we need to really bank on somebody else to develop it.
Not yet, we're not gonna do it yet. Alright, so, um.
I do have a couple questions, how, this is probably today, how long are we looking at to design some of this? These projects, like Cedar Johnson wrote, if we're looking at, you know, two to three years, like, is it gonna take two to three years to? Get that designed and, I mean, is that something we should start, start doing now?
If we wanted to move forward with the design on that, I think that the biggest issue is getting that right away. Uh, transferred over to the city, that's going to take some time, if we're reasonably confident we can get that done and wanna move forward. We could work on survey, we're probably not going to get much done, uh, once we get snow on the ground, but I would suspect we start in the spring. We could have a design and out to bid next year in the winter, and then have the following season for construction.
Is design and everything added in there?
We gotta pay for the design of it too.
I was gonna say, is that part of that?
That's in that total project cost that we've estimated currently.
So for the east side water, everything has the design added into it already?
That's great.
East side, okay. Thank you.
Makes me feel better.
So in other words, then we need Maggie to kinda give us an idea how this can be paid for, and as soon as we get that. Scenario, then we can decide what we're gonna do, when we're gonna do them, and then we can start getting things designed.
Correct.
See what kind of room we have in our. General debt obligation.
Ideally, we'd like to, you'd start doing that by December.
The end of December.
So we can start looking at our budget with.
Yeah.
Before that, if we're gonna TIF ask for any of that.
Yeah, right.
When do we have to have TIF asking?
So last meeting November.
Yeah.
Well, it's gonna be filed by December first with the auditor.
Day of the month.
We can talk that.
Well, I guess the other thing is, is what we come with a plan, I mean. Honestly, guys, we, our city administrator doesn't start until November thirtieth. Really oughta run some of this by him before we just.
He'll be either watching, he'll, he's not zooming in, but he'll.
I actually thought about.
I mean, ultimately, he's gonna do what we tell him, you know, he works at our, but.
He may have some insight that I'm not thinking about.
Right. Well, maybe.
I'm gonna, I'll call him and let him know that, uh, you asked me today, since he wanted me emailed some of this information and.
Considering he's already emailing us and stuff.
That's right, which is great.
Yeah.
That was awesome. Okay, he'll be kept in the loop, I'm sure. Alright, what else we need to talk about, anything more on that? I will call Maggie. Tell her we're getting serious, real serious about how to fund those.
So in summary.
Correct.
Those projects would be done over three years. That's a three-year, three-year project, I think.
More than that.
No, I mean, the Cedar Johnson, and, oh, what will we do, uh, divide the east side water into two years? Cedar, Cedar Johnson, and then, uh, uh, then section, correct?
Um, I'm thinking three or four years, I, three years seems awful quick.
Isn't WOMP C, isn't the downstream widening in the east side together?
No.
Be separate project, separate contractors for that.
But wouldn't we want the Cedar Johnson, the, the inner, inner.
That's top, that's gotta go first.
Yeah, that was, that's looking at, that's just this summer.
That'll just be a twenty-eight E with the county and they handle everything, we pay them.
And we're paying them at the end?
I believe.
I thought it was gonna be the other way around, they wanted us to do it and they're gonna pay us.
If we do the roundabout, they, it's forty percent designed already, well. So their engineer will take over. The round of, if we do a roundabout. Because it's, they've already done the groundwork for it.
Dave's not gonna do the design on it.
Dave, Dave's out of it. They would probably do the construction administration and all that, the, the county would, which I like.
Do we know that for sure?
I'm hopefully have an agreement here shortly, because they wanna build the project and ease them some, we tell them which way we wanted to go, so.
You still wanna do a roundabout?
I thought we discussed this at.
No, that's what I mean, but we gotta get, we gotta get the cost.
Do we need a resolution to? To.
I, I'll just.
So, Tony knows.
I work with Dave and is the engineer taking the lead on the twenty-eight E, Dave?
Yes, Neil was supposed to be working that on their end, um, they had a draft already prepared previously, and then we stepped back because of the cost, so. We just need to contact Neil to let him know that we are looking to move forward with the roundabout, and we need to update the terms of the twenty-eighty.
So, yes.
Yeah, that's a yes.
Um, are we, we motion to the? That consensus, everyone?
Yeah, I think we pretty much, we guys pretty much agree to it.
Can't do a motion.
I know, but the twenty-eighty will end it, so.
We have to accept the twenty-eighty.
Well, the twenty-eighty will be the document, and the debt, and the debt document.
Okay, so do we have any idea which way they're leaning, we paying for it upfront, they paying for it upfront, we paying them, do we have any idea?
Well, I thought the way it was last time, we were, David, are we paying at the end, you remember?
We would pay as construction costs were incurred, was my understanding, uh.
Every thirty days.
There was, there was a, an opposition to having the county bankroll and have the city pay them back at any point. That was the discussion we had with Board of Supervisors, I didn't wanna be a bank for it.
So some of that money is in this year's budget. Correct? It's gonna happen, it's gonna start.
We're gonna have to borrow it.
We're gonna have to borrow that.
Yeah, you would.
So another good.
So we need to figure out what our first phase is gonna be soon, and we'll just borrow that money altogether.
Yep. Yeah, you got a preference?
Yep, and we have two years for that bond, if we borrow it to spend the money, so it's, if we do two separate bonds, it stretches it out. We have a four-year period to complete all the projects.
Alright. Okay, good discussion. Um. I'll call Maggie, I'll call Adam. Um, tell him to watch the video tonight.
Nick's not on.
Yeah, a couple days. I'll, I'll warm him up to what we talked about. Okay, any other city staff reports, Matt? Melissa's not here, she's in Maine doing something. Kitchen. Um, Heidi, your chief Hannah? Hearing none? Mayor and council, I have, can't think of anything I wanna chat about. Other than there's some interest in the crow site. Um. Chad Cuney had a discussion with me, he wants to go ahead with some major commercial construction up there. Behind the BP. Possibly, possibly a hotel. Um, he's looking for some TIF tax rebates. On the commercial portion.
And we just talked last week and he said, you're not asking for nothing.
Called me Friday.
So he's, he's here. So anyway, um. That's out there. Um, I'll keep you guys informed. Not sure what the next step is, him is, I'm gonna talk to Adam too, and start picking Adam's brain well.
You'd have to amend the urban renewal plan if that was gonna happen.
This year?
Whenever he wants to get it, pending.
That's not in the urban renewal plan?
You gotta do the actual project if you're gonna give a rebate, you don't know what, I mean, the, the, the property's in there, it's the. You gotta remember, you gotta do a project every time, so some, somebody asked. Yeah, correct, you just have to, you just have to, if he wants a rebate for twenty percent, you have to do an agreement, that's your. You have to add that to the, just like you did with Little Lights or anything like that.
Might that wanna be done in November?
Well, well, depends how fast he wants to. So rebates don't get paid for a year, you're a year behind, so you can wait, it doesn't have to be done by December.
Correct, but is there a developers agreement that needs to be developed?
Yes.
Signed, agreed on.
But that has to be, the plan has to be amended first before the double agreement, but you gotta get details.
You don't have a developers agreement already?
For it, for the TIF part, he has a developers agreement for the subdivision and everything, yes.
A little late.
Yeah, that's all, everything will be approved at the next meeting, everything's, yeah.
Talk with you and how to get all that going. It sounds like we got all the winners, get that figured out. Well, next year.
Yeah. Ask them until next December.
Alright, well, it's after eight o'clock and I'm gonna, I'm disappointing you guys for running longs.
I just got one comment, so the Hoover libraries, the Hoover people are doing their, the Lions Club and the Hoover people are doing their. Feeding the hungry people this weekend on Saturday. I'm going with the Kiwanis Club, it would be cool if the city made a.
Yeah, I'd like to be there, I was going to, but I'm going to a football. About you? Um, you gonna be there?
Nope, damn. I got a golf tournament.
So. The work hours are from eight to noon, it was a four-hour work session, and then from like one to four or five, I think. Ten to twelve, oh, only two hours.
Two hours.
Move it to Sunday. I'll do it.
Well, I'm glad you're gonna be, I'll be, sorry. What are you doing, Stan?
I'll be done.
Looks terrible. Feel bad. Okay, anything else, anyone, most to adjourn? Kerry and Bolton, all those in favor, say aye.